So I'll call the regular City Commission to order for Wednesday, December 2nd, 2015. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw is absent this evening. Commissioner Polly?
Here.
There you are.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here.
So if you'll stand and join me in the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item under San Marino's proclamation, is the presentations, presentation of grant award from the Oregon City Community Foundation to the Oregon City Library Foundation. Ms. Cole?
Good evening.
Not you?
I would like to introduce our guests who will be doing the presentation. We have Richard Carter and Wendy Valles from the Oregon Community Foundation and Karen Martini from the Oregon City Library Foundation.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Holliday, members of the Commission. We appreciate you allowing us a few minutes this evening on your agenda to tell you a little bit about the Oregon Community Foundation. So I'm joined this evening by Wendy Valles. Wendy and I are two of 1,600 volunteers of the Oregon Community Foundation, and we are both members of the Metropolitan Portland Leadership Council. And as part of our role on the Leadership Council, we do have the opportunity to provide some guidance to the Oregon Community Foundation and on community needs and to help increase giving throughout the state of Oregon. So just a little bit about Oregon Community Foundation. The OCF was founded over 41 years ago, and it started out with an initial contribution of just over $60,000. And today, that $60,000 has turned into over $1.5 billion in assets. And how did they do that? They did that through the generosity of hundreds of Oregonians. And these are Oregonians that wanted to give back to their state, and OCF was able to provide them a vehicle to do that. And they basically create funds within the Oregon Community Foundation that support causes that the donor is passionate about. And in order to get more bang for the buck, OCF consolidates these contributions, manages them by professionals as a pool of funds, and then it helps to ensure strong returns over time. So through the generosity of all of these donors, OCF was able last year to donate over $80 million in grants to nonprofits throughout the state of Oregon and help over 3,200 students with scholarships. So tonight, on behalf of the Oregon Community Foundation, Wendy and I have the pleasure of presenting a grant of $30,000 to the Oregon City Library Foundation to help to renovate and expand the 100-year-old Carnegie Library that I'm sure you all would agree has become too small to serve the needs of this community, and hopefully this grant will help support the expansion of that library. So this grant comes from the Ashley K. Drew Foundation Fund and the Jerome S. and Barbara Bischoff Library Subfund of the Oregon Community Foundation. So congratulations to the Oregon City Library Foundation.
Well, I just want to, can you hear me? I just want to say a special word of thanks. This is, this is a huge grant for us. It's more than just the $30,000, which, as you know, is important in and of itself. But this is a vote of confidence, because the Oregon Community Foundation is the premier foundation in the state, and others look to them for leadership. So when you're among that select group of folks who receive grants from OCF, it's leveraged, and others follow. So this is the first of what I hope will be other foundation grants, and we really appreciate you for leading the way and partnering with us. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Why don't you guys stand up and let Mo get a picture?
Okay.
Bobby, you didn't bring your camera?
Right. It's out in the car.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. That's great.
Who's got this?
Yeah, so introducing Amy Willhite, the Chair of the Citizen Involvement Committee, who will be providing our update on the progress that they've made over the last year.
Great. Welcome, Amy.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. It's a privilege to be here tonight to update you on our year. As you know, it started out as a tumultuous year, and it took us quite a while to get things calmed down. But I believe we're back on track where we want to be. We really appreciate that Tony and his department have stepped up to help us. They're a great liaison. It's been a great success. They can pull in people that, from the city. As the presentation tonight, I brought the goals that we have set as a CIC that we'll, I'll just go through them briefly. We've, goal number one was to create a public involvement plan, to increase public participation. And we haven't done that yet. We just finalized our goals in October, and so we haven't been able to do that yet. But we have started implementing the public involvement plan. Of course, we can't implement what we don't have. But representing the CIC at public events, we've started to do that. The first event that we went to was National Night Out, and at that event, this, we hand out this flyer on the front. It, it just has a picture of the neighborhood in the back. It talks about the Neighborhood Associations and the Citizen Involvement Council. We have a big map. You can see it under, we're under the balloons. Tried to zoom in a little bit. These are just various photos. They all have different people at different times. This was actually at another event, but it's the same look. But we asked people, what neighborhood do you live in? And we have a big map of Oregon City, and they come and show, and then we use, this is the inside of the flyer. It lists every Neighborhood Association, so when they tell us where they live, we find which Neighborhood Association they belong to, and we circle it for them, tell them when their next meeting is, and we tally, trying to see where people are coming from. And at the National Night Out in August, we handed out 94 flyers. We visited with well over 100 groups of people, and sometimes you have three or four people in a group. It was really well received. It was a fun night. We had probably five or six representatives from the CIC volunteer to come and hand out flyers and get to know people and try to promote attending Neighborhood Association meetings. That's kind of the goal, is to get them to realize that it's not a homeowners association, it's a Neighborhood Association, and to try to explain what it is. So we have a lot of people that have never heard of it, don't understand what the, you know, what's going on. So then in September, we went, this is the Safety Fair that's held on Danielson's parking lot, another great event. We in the past have gone to the farmer's market, but what we discovered was that a lot of people are coming from out of the area to the farmer's market, and so it wasn't a good use of time to be there for hours. We only handed out about 15 flyers, I think is, and at the Health and Safety Fair, we handed out 83 flyers. Again, talking to way more people than that, that's the number of flyers. So we really felt that we got a good mix. It's interesting to see the tallies at the Neighborhood, at the National Night Out. The McLaughlin Neighborhood had the most number of people that came from that neighborhood. And then at the Safety Fair, the Caulfield Neighborhood, which wasn't surprising when you think of the makeup of the Caulfield. There are a lot of young families in the new townhomes, and there was a lot of people that were, had just moved to Oregon City that were coming, and so they had never heard of not only the Neighborhood Associations, but, you know, we told them about other events that are happening. So we, you know, felt it was a great opportunity to get the word out back to our goals. As part of this, sometimes it's hard, and you can get the same three people volunteering to go to these events. So we, as a group, the CIC, we voted that we would ask each member of the CIC to volunteer at least for one public event every year, so that they know right off the bat going into 2016, hey, let's look at our calendar, we want you there. Goal number two was to increase knowledge about land use and city business, increasing knowledge about the land use process by providing training to the public and at the CIC meetings. We've had two really good presentations lately. One was on the planning review process, going through what's a type one, what's a type two, so that we can help our, when the developers come to the neighborhoods, we know exactly what we can, you know, what, what can we say, what can we ask, what can we share with the neighbors if we want to send a recommendation? How do you do that? If you have concerns, how do you address that? We also had a presentation about land use in Oregon City, talking about what's the urban growth boundary, what's the comprehensive plans, concept plans, annexation, development, all these things that bring land use back to the CIC so that we can then go out to the neighborhoods and share that information with the public. Increasing knowledge about general city business by providing information to the public from all city departments and the CIC at CIC meetings. We have, John Lewis comes to our meetings and always has a public works update. That seems to affect so many people, that's something that we just have on a monthly basis. And then other departments are invited to come, hopefully at least once a year, and then as, if they have a big project that's affecting a lot of neighborhoods, then we'll have them come. Increasing knowledge about general city business by inviting other city groups to provide presentations. We've had numerous presentations at our next upcoming meeting. We have someone coming from CERT, you know, some good information to get out. And again, as a representative on the CIC, there's two members from each Neighborhood Association, and that's a great help, but we felt that as a group, it would be nice if you realized that your neighborhood's not alone in the city. And sometimes, in order to help, you need to know what's going on with your other neighbors. And so we asked that each CIC representative would attend a minimum of one other neighborhood meeting throughout the year. With the rough start of the year, I was going out to a number of the neighborhoods and smoothing feathers and attending their meetings, and so far, I have gone to seven of the 12 neighborhoods, and hopefully in the next few months, I'll have hit all of the neighborhoods. I've gone to some of them more than once. Once you go, then sometimes they ask you to come back, just as a presence, another presence that is there. And it's interesting to note how the different Neighborhood Associations are run for the, the representatives are doing a good job of bringing the information from the CIC meetings back to those Neighborhood Meetings. So I think we're on a really good path. Goal three was to develop resources to help maintain active Neighborhood Associations and to help reactivate inactive Neighborhood Associations. With the change of the guard, we have lost two Neighborhood Associations that are inactive at the moment, and so we are going to develop a plan. Part of going to the different Neighborhood Associations helps keep them active, if they feel support from other members. But then we also have a goal to develop a guide to help reactivate, like, what do we do to get started? If somebody comes up and says, I'd like to start it again, we don't have to start from scratch. It would be nice to have something for them, to hand them, to help them.
And Amy, what were the two?
Tower Vista and Hazel Grove Westling Farms are the two that are inactive at the moment. And so Hillendale Neighborhood stepped up, and they, when they send out their notices, they're also inviting Tower Vista, since they're right next door. And the South End Neighborhood is inviting the Hazel Grove Westling Farms, because they're right next door, so that hopefully, unfortunately, there was a mix-up at the last Hillendale, and the notices didn't get sent out. So we've got, put a procedure in place that will help so that that doesn't happen in the future, because what we discover is if those postcards don't go out, even though they're on set times and there's other places that they're listed, it's just that last reminder. And so there's just not a very good turnout at Neighborhood Meetings if the postcards don't go out. So we're hoping at the next meeting for Hillendale that we'll have folks there from Tower Vista that'll be able to get them started, hopefully. And then we have a goal to create an avenue for public comments to be conveyed to the appropriate city department. And to do that, we will be creating a system to track public comments and verify that they are conveyed to the appropriate city person or group, so that we don't become a place where anybody wants to just come and give a comment. We want to listen to what's being said, but we want them to understand, there's a transportation advisory, there's a parks, there's, you know, there's all these other boards and committees that they should be going to, and we can get them in the right direction. So those are our goals. I think we've, again, we've come a long ways, and we're looking forward to 2016 to actually implement and create some of these.
Thank you.
That sounds good.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we are on to citizen comments. Are there any citizens wishing to comment? I'm not seeing it on my, oh, Jonathan Stone.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Jonathan Stone, and I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Oregon City Association and a resident of Oregon City. I'm here tonight just to mention a couple of things that are going on in the Association that I thought would be of interest and to share the details about those events. So this is at Eric's prodding. I don't make an occasion to come make individual event announcements usually at the Commission, so maybe this will start a trend. But we recently reactivated our Economic Restructuring Committee, of which Carol had the pleasure of accidentally sitting in on for a brief moment the other day. So we had two committees that begin with E's, and I mis-scheduled them, and so the wrong people showed up for a different meeting, but.
I show up, though. That's good.
Yeah. Carol will always show up. But anyways, that committee has been restarted, and they've lashed on to two projects for their first, first set of projects, and they're pretty exciting. The first one that's really kicking off as we speak is what we're calling a retail broker open house. And so next Thursday at 4:30 PM, we've invited Portland-area retail, I'm sorry, commercial real estate professionals, especially those that represent retail properties and tenants to come and visit and tour downtown Oregon City. And as the Portland Business Journal article that went out yesterday stated, if you haven't, if you, if any of these things, and they listed a litany of experiences and businesses in Oregon City, don't ring a bell, it's probably a time that you come back. And so what we're hoping to do is to reintroduce downtown and by extension, Oregon City to the greater Portland metro commercial real estate community. So we think that's a fun project. If you guys want to come and join the tour, there is a, open houses at various properties throughout downtown, and then it ends with a happy hour afterwards, sponsored by US Bank.
Thursday's a pretty busy day for us.
I know.
Chambers having their roundtable Christmas event, and we have the Regional Waste Water Treatment Capacity Advisory Committee, and.
Yeah. I was just on the phone with Amber a little earlier, and it's like, I think we both chose that Thursday for the same reason, and that is, so it's not too close to Christmas. So it just happens that way. Unfortunately, have to pick and choose. But if you guys would like to attend, you're very welcome to attend.
Thank you.
Then the second one I had was, we're forming a cultural, what do we call it, a cultural working group. And so that working group, in partnership with the Clackamas County Arts Alliance, will start next month and explore the possibility of bringing cultural facilities to downtown. So think of Black Box Theater or something like that. So that's one of the other economic restructuring projects that's underway, and more to come, I'm sure. Any questions?
Can I add a quick side note? So for Small Business Saturday, is that what that was called? There was a feature on Main Street, and they went into Sandra's hat shop, and they talked about buying local and buying small, going to.
A feature on.
TV. A challenge.
Yes. Yeah, it was really great, and it's just really neat to showcase Oregon City is getting lots of attention, and it'll be great to have those brokers come down and check it out.
It's good to know that another Telogen station realizes Oregon City's here.
It's happening.
We were glad they showed up, but they did miss, they interviewed me for a brief moment, and then they put my name up as Pam Tatum of The Flap on TV, so.
Jonathan.
Anyways, thank you so much.
Jonathan, could you also mention the happenings this Saturday?
Yes.
For the benefit of the viewing public.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was very one-track focused. We have actually two other events that are happening in the next week and a half. The tree lighting, of course, is this Saturday at 4:30, and preceding that is the Elevators 100th Year Anniversary sort of reception, which I understand you guys are going to have elevator cookies. So beginning at 3:30 at the Observatory on the top of the elevator. And then the following Saturday is the culmination of the Snowflake Raffle, which is where we'll raffle off a top prize of $1,500 to those that participated, and we've received, we've had over 500 unique people text in multiples of tickets, and then people submit online multiples of tickets, and who knows how many are going to show up the day of with more tickets. So it's pretty cool to see all that participation in buying local.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully those are one-way elevator cookies. Just saying. Okay, the agenda. Everybody happy with the agenda?
Yes, very.
Okay, so we have 6A's, PC 15, 233, readoptions of the Bee Creek Road Concept Plan. This is a request for continuance. I'm going to open the public hearing just for a moment, just in case there's anybody here who wants to comment. Is there anybody, Ms. Riggs?
Yes, there is. There are Bob Mahoney. And you wanted citizen comment?
I'm just opening too.
So I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Mahoney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. I'm really not here to speak in favor one way or the other regarding the concept plan, but it suddenly, well, not suddenly, but over the, over the past several years that I've been on the commission, and I'm not speaking for them, I'm just speaking as an observer regarding regional planning. But I think that the cities in the Portland metropolitan regional area have to eventually come to the collective decision that we are in the process of a metropolitan regional plan. We're partners in that. The city of Oregon City is not in a vacuum when it comes to planning. We've got so many layers that this city has to consider in terms of complying with statewide land use goals, that we find that we're not the lone actor. We've got the city, the county, Metro, the state, the federal government, all acting in compliance with various laws that they have to enforce. Now that leaves us to, can we, how do, how do we react to all of these challenges in terms of, of addressing ordinances and statutes that we have to comply with? And it is not a simple thing to do. And I congratulate our staff for keeping the Planning Commission advised with reams of paper that we get to, that we get to read. You know, I mean, and then you sit, you know, with the concept plan, we're looking at it as a legislative matter and not a quasi-judicial matter, so we can throw banana appeals at each other. But during a quasi-judicial process, we have to behave ourselves and act as judges, you know, and make a findings and this, this thing and that thing. So I just want you to understand that a local government is still where it's at in terms of decision-making for, for local problems, but they get out of hand in some cases and become a regional problem, like transportation, where hundreds of millions of dollars are at stake, or sanitary sewer problems, where between the counties and the cities, and it becomes a political issue and a technical issue. And it's just another layer that we have to consider in our decision-making process. So it's no, no simple task, and we are faced with those challenges. And I'm not trying to shine anybody on and think that everybody's a hero because they're sitting on boards and commissions doing this kind of stuff, but I'm just pointing out to you the, the, the character of the, of the challenges that we face. So with that, good luck.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Kitty? Anybody on, he's wishing to comment? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion to continue this till.
Date certain of January 6, 2016.
I move to continue.
Second?
So motion by Commissioner President Polly, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call a roll.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay, that makes things pretty easy. So general business, 15-646, Resolution 15-36, supporting a joint grant application with Metro and Clackamas County for environmental protection agency funds to conduct brownfield assessment and remediation in McLaughlin investment area. Who is this?
Me tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Evening, Commissioners. So we have the opportunity to partner with Metro Clackamas County to apply for an EPA grant that addresses brownfield assessments along the 99E corridor. We have an opportunity, it would go from the Blue Heron site on the south end up 99E to the industrial north of Milwaukee. The intent of the, of the grant is to identify potentially up to 20 properties that have some type of environmental contamination, and if we have willing property owners, where the timing's right for them, investment or development or cleanup, this grant would provide an opportunity to provide that initial phase one, phase two remediation, investigation, and then potentially, depending on where they're at in the process of remediation plan associated with that. We do see the 99E corridor with the extension of the Orange Line down into Milwaukee, with a lot of potential along that corridor for redevelopment. So you can imagine gas stations from the 40s, 50s, 60s, tanks, underground storage tanks, other types of environmental contamination that may or may not exist in some of the industrial areas, is an opportunity to really start to focus some of these funds in that area. This also coincides with work that Gladstone's doing with a community planning and development grant for their downtown, community planning and development grant that we received for the Blue Heron Project, it's part of the Walnut Falls Legacy Project. So there's quite a bit of investment going on in this area, so we think this fits in very well with that. The other advantage is that once you go through this first step on the grant process, it does open up additional federal funds for cleanup at a later date for sites where it may be applicable. That cleanup funds are usually applicable to publicly-held or public agencies, but we have been working with the state, and they do have loans available for private property owners at very reasonable interest rates or payback timeline. So this would be the first step to try to identify properties along that corridor and take those first steps to try to help with cleanup redevelopment in that area. So we are requesting a resolution of support from the Commission if you so choose to do that as part of the grant, and it is due December 18. These grants come out, and there's a pretty short window to turn them around and get them back.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I used to be the brownfields manager at Clackamas County many moons ago, and we did assessment work also in the McLaughlin corridor. So somewhere in the economic development files is a lot of information along those lines that might be a good foundation for you. Of course, there may have been more contamination in the interim, but one of the challenges that we found was that even though a property might potentially have brownfields, some of the property owners didn't really want to know about it. And, you know, the, the key time to catch people is when they're actually in the process of doing a transaction, because that's when the banks will require assessments to be able to finance. So that's the, the magic is finding that the property owner at that time that's going to be wanting to work with you. So it's, it's a great program, and it does open the door to more financing, but it's not quite as easy as folks might think.
I appreciate the, the update on potential information that's already out there that'll be great for us to try to go find. And it was interesting, we did a public participation event, education event at the Museum of the Oregon Territory as part of this grant, inviting folks along the corridor. And there was a concern about, oh, well, you're only going to do 20 of these, and I think the response was, we'll be very excited if we get 20 willing property owners who want to participate.
Exactly right. So I have a question. So is the grant only for the assessment, or are there also going to be funds to aid in cleanup?
So this grant is only for the assessment stage, but it does open the door for additional cleanup funds for eligible properties.
And the 20 have already been selected?
No, no.
Oh.
This is, this is just the grant application to the federal government. If we're successful. If we're successful, uh, then we would go into all of the detail of setting up a, a committee that would review potential properties, rank them, and, and really make a determination of, okay, where do we wanna spend these resources that we have? Um, so this is just to get us in the doors. If we get funded, there'll be a much more defined, uh, selection process, public participation, um, and public involvement plan that'll be, that would come out of that.
Great.
It's, uh, great that you're partnering with Metro on this. And Brian Harper was very active at the time we were involved. So he's gonna have the institutional memory as well.
And he is leading this effort for Metro, uh, this time around as well.
I move to approve resolution number 15-36, supporting a joint grant application with Metro and Clackamas County for EPA funds to conduct brownfield assessment and remediation in McLaughlin investment area.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Mangelberg. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mangelberg?
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay, this, is there anything on the consent agenda anybody wants to pull?
No.
I have a comment on the minutes for the 11, uh, or the November 4th, uh, special meeting.
Yeah.
The minutes state that the meeting began at 5:00 PM and it should say 5:30. So I just wanna make that correction in the record now.
Move to approve consent agenda with the added correction.
Second?
By Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Mangelberg. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mangelberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay. So communications, Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Just briefly tonight, um, just a reminder, at the Pioneer Community Center's holiday giving tree is still going on. Gift tags are available at the community center through Friday, December 11th, uh, if anybody'd like to participate in that program. So that is still ongoing. On this Saturday, December 5th, um, we, um, entered into a contract with Friends of Trees to do a, uh, tree planting event in the McLaughlin and Barclay Hills neighborhood, neighborhoods. Uh, they successfully signed up 93, um, property owners, participate in that of, in that planting this weekend. So it's pretty exciting. This is the first time we've done this event in, I, I, this is the first one I've been involved with since I've been here. Um, so there'll be 10 planting crews that'll be going out and, and planting those trees. They'll include the homeowners, Oregon City High School students, and other tree-minded local folks. Uh, they are always, is always looking for volunteers if anybody would like to assist with that. So the event starts at, uh, um, 8:45 at the Zion Lutheran Church, 720 Jefferson Street. Uh, there'll be breakfast available for those who would like to grab something there, breakfast and coffees. And then they'll go up, load up on the trucks, do the plantings. Um, and then there'll be a lunch afterwards at, at the church for anybody who would, uh, who participated in that event. Um, so just wanted to make folks aware that that is, uh, going on this weekend. Um, so now I'll have, uh, an update from, uh, Mr. Archer concerning the Mountain View Cemetery.
Uh, Mayor, Commission, just, uh, as you recall, a few weeks ago, we had some pretty significant vandalism and, and damage at the cemetery. Uh, a bit of good news out of that, uh, we had, uh, I believe 31 of the headstones were knocked over. Of those, uh, we've been able to put back into place, uh, with, with minimal damage, 29 of those. So all but a couple of them have been able to be replaced. Uh, the two that were not are going to be, um, repaired and then eventually put back into place. They're not usually exactly perfect when they get repaired like that, but they at least get, at least as best we can, we, and, and put back together. So the good news out of that is that we've, most of those headstones are recovered and, and back as they should be. And, um, a couple of them we're working on, so.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, I will also say that, um, the Oregon City Heritage Coordinated Committee, uh, had a meeting and decided to make a donation to, to the cemetery. And that was also followed by, um, Clackamas Heritage Partners at the museum, who were also making a donation to, uh, help repair the headstones.
Yeah, and we thank that, uh, those organizations very much for that.
So while we're on the subject, um, I went up and did, uh, a, a survey, um, 'cause it's kind of been my professional bailiwick, closer to television surveillance, that sort of thing. And, um, I think we need to put together a work session and have a chat about spending the money that we need to spend. Now, we don't have to do the entire cemetery, but I think we can do some pretty effective coverage of the historical part of the cemetery that's most at risk. Um, and that would give us the ability to, um, catch the little hoodlums who did this, 'cause I'm fairly certain that we're talking about that, you know, 15 to 25 age range. Um, so.
So on that note, Mr. Mayor, we are, uh, we, we are thinking about those things as well and had anticipated bringing that back to you at a, either the work session or your goals update or something in, in the near future, uh, you know, shortly after the first of the year, whenever that gets set. And we would bring some costs to you to consider and to think about and have a discussion. So we, we've been anticipating that discussion.
Okay, and, and I would think that at least, I'm pretty sure I have a, a, a pretty solid consensus up here that if we needed to do a budget adjustment and take some stuff out of contingency to do this, but this is like the, it's been going on for quite a while and we haven't done anything about it. And I think at this point, we really do need to, I mean, this is a, a historical resource in our city that we, you know, some of those things, if they really are destroyed, you're never gonna get back. So.
One of the things, uh, Mr. Mayor, that might come up, um, going down that road is the same thing's happened in the old, uh, uh, the Pioneer Cemetery down in the Canema area.
Canema Cemetery, yeah.
Um, a couple of years ago, we had significant damage down there. So I would, it, it might happen that if, um, we do something in this place that people might ask us about doing something down there.
There's no physical structure down there, is there?
I don't think so.
No.
In fact, that's not.
That presents a problem.
Yeah.
'Cause you gotta have a place to put the front end. Um, so, you know, we would literally down there, we would have to build a structure for it. So I, I, I didn't know about that one. So I'll have to go down and take a look and see what we could do down there. Okay, Mr. Conkle?
Next we have, um, an update from Ms. Cole, Library Construction Progress.
The ever-favorite library.
Yes, yes. It's looking good.
Let me guess, more cinder blocks?
Yes. taller than ever.
And no, that's not what it's gonna look like.
Oh, we're gonna save money. We're not gonna put brick on the outside. Don't I tell you?
Don't, don't start anything. Come on.
Oh, thanks, Katie.
I'm gonna paint it to look like bricks.
I think we need that picture, like, all over the outside or right there on the street.
That main picture?
Yeah, when people drive by, they can see the picture and realize it's not going to be cinder block.
Well, the exciting thing this week is that, um, steel has arrived and steel has starting to get installed. The only thing that's slowing down the steel a little bit has been the weather, because they have to wait until the walls are completely grouted and the walls can't get grouted until it's dry enough. And it was also very, very cold, as you know, a couple of days. So that has slowed this down. If you see this outside the library, that's the demo, the demonstration wall that, um, to show the architects all the finishes and all that stuff, so that there's one little spot. Uh, as we go in and the entrance and turn around and look towards Atkinson Church, you can see the elevator tower. And then, um, the wall that adjoins the elevator tower, that is a sheer wall that, the top of that is the top of the first floor. I'm pretty sure that's what I was told. Just another view, that, um, that big piece of equipment in there, it's like a dinosaur kind of lumbering around inside this really small space. It's kind of amazing what they can do with, um, big equipment.
It's a sky track.
It's big.
Big forklift.
It's big, yeah. They also have like these accordion ones that are really cool too.
Those are called scissor lifts.
Thank you very much. So good having you here as my expert. Here's the entrance into the, um, into the Carnegie. I think I showed you this before without the brick having been taken out. So now the brick has been taken out. And there's a really, really tricky piece of steel that, um, had, that's all been installed. So the steel for this, supporting that wall, you can't see it from this side, but it's all been installed. It took like one day into the night to install this about an eight-foot length of steel in this one super tricky spot. And it's all done. So that's pretty exciting, actually. This is, um, the tall wall looking out towards Jefferson. It's weird because, you know, the floors aren't in.
There's a scissor lift.
And there's some steel. Yeah. And look, there's a construction worker. So this is just looking towards 7th and Jefferson. So, you know, the steel's starting to go up in there, which you may or may not be able to see from the street, so that's why I show it. And then downstairs in the back wall, this is the adjoining wall to the addition downstairs. The furring out is starting for that wall. And we had a tour. So everybody got to dress up in helmets and vests and go out and take a look around. This was our staff meeting. And it was really good because it just gives a perspective of what we're working towards that they couldn't, you can't see that from, you know, through the back wall. So they really loved it. That's the end.
That's great.
Thanks.
I have a question. Uh, with the opening in the existing library and all the cold weather we've been having, has that been hard to keep the library warm for everybody?
No, mm-mm. It hasn't been hard to keep it warm at all. I think because we have those interior walls that block off the back.
Okay.
You know, and we made a decision a few weeks ago just to leave those interior walls in place instead of trying to like, even though they are, will be finishing that work, it's just like, leave well enough alone, change as little as possible until we have to change again. We're kind of used to the whole system. The patrons are used to the whole system. So it kind of creates a buffer, which is nice with the noise and everything too. We're getting really used to these conditions too. I already told the construction workers, we're gonna miss the noise, you guys. It's like, no more hammering. What's that gonna be like? So it's working well. It's going well. Thanks.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next I'll have, uh, updates from Mr. Lewis. He was waiting for claps.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just, thank you very much, Commission, for taking a few minutes.
Let me get my signature.
I'll just point out that, you know, I think when you mentioned Mo's name, there was Yaze and Clackamas. That thing happened when you mentioned John Lewis.
Yay!
Nobody loves me. Everybody hates me. Guess I'll go eat worms?
So you have a picture for us.
There you go. And hopefully someday we'll have, you know, dinosaur-like equipment. Be able to wear our helmets out there. Go on sick constructions. Yeah, I don't, I don't know about scissor lifts, but, yeah, we, we should, hopefully, uh, what, what I wanted to tell you about was, um, a recent supplemental for, uh, what's, looks to be 2018 to 2020 funding through the state. It's a grant application for the second phase of Main Street. It's basically five blocks of Main Street. It's that section of Main Street you don't travel much, probably because it's pretty uncomfortable to travel. And, um, you may travel it in a car, but you definitely avoid it if you're a pedestrian. And it needs enhancements. And our project is about a $2.4 million project that would include, uh, similar features that we had in the first phase. So street lighting, street trees, parking, um, uh, meters, uh, you know, improvements to the transit center, street furnishings, new sidewalks, ADA ramps, all those kinds of features that you've seen before. We hope to be able to squeeze in, um, maybe some of the quiet zone improvements that we would like to have at, at, um, 13th and, actually, it's not 13th, it's, uh, I forget the little, 11th, 11th Street. And, uh, and maybe some, uh, signalization right there at the transit center that would better help both bus movements and pedestrian movements, 'cause there's a lot of pedestrian activity there. And when the buses are parked in that area, it's, it's, uh, it's dangerous at times. So we'd like to have better enhancements there as well. So, um, we're proposing a 32% match, which is a significant match, and we're hoping that helps our, um, application. Uh, we're competing with a lot of other agencies for $11 million in the region, re, in our region, which includes Washington County, Multnomah County, and Clackamas County. And if you remember.
Is this a, is this an act, is this a act funding?
This is, um, what's called STIP funding, State Transportation Improvement Funding.
Okay.
And, um, but the decision-makers are the people that make up the Region 1 Act. So.
So it's not Washington County, it's Hood River County?
Uh, well.
That Region 1 didn't include Washington County?
It includes a bit of Hood River County and Washington County and Multnomah County. It's a big region. Um, typically, we haven't had a Region 1 Act or Area Commission on Transportation. And, uh, we haven't had that because we've had Metro to help guide those decisions. And we've had such a strong, um, uh, presence of, of ODOT staff that could help manage that. And, um, but recently, there was a press for a Region 1 Act. And that's made up of, um, each of those eight, uh, each of those jurisdictions, uh, had the opportunity for somewhere between, I can't remember the numbers, but four to.
Four to six.
I think, I think some counties got more. Portland, for instance, got a few more than Clackamas County did. But I think in Clackamas County, we've got six representatives.
Yes.
And, uh, Commissioner Chavez is the, is the chair of the act, or co-chair of the act. Uh, I think Roy Rogers is the chair from Washington County. And so they're the, they're actually the decision-makers. And so there's, the reason why I wanna share it with you, we'll be giving you more information on this. At some point in time, I think there is gonna become some political, uh, or need for political connections or communication from some of you to some of our, our act members to make sure that we're sharing the, the message that this is a very important project for Oregon City. It would help connect that pedestrian link between, uh, the, the waterfront or John Storm Park and our existing Main Street and the elevator and the promenade. And eventually, um, Willamette Falls Legacy Project. So, great project, and just wanted to.
What's this one little orphan yellow square?
That's that, uh, that's that railroad crossing. It's currently a pedestrian crossing, uh, that we would want to enhance and make a little safer and hopefully comply a little bit more. That'd be one area where we'd have to make some compliance efforts if we ever go with a railroad quiet zone in the downtown area. So it'd be, it's another project that we included with this work in part of our application. So typically for at-grade crossings like that, it's some kind of signage, maybe, just to make sure the pedestrian doesn't just stumble out onto the tracks.
Have, have we had an accident there?
Well, I guess I'm not sure. I haven't, I haven't heard of one, but, uh, wouldn't surprise me. Usually those at-grade crossings, whether it's alcohol involved or something else, you, you can have problems. So they want safeguards. When you're talking quiet zone, right. So. So, um, the next update is related to a variety of tri-city activities that I thought would be good proof, um, to give you an update and, um, just kind of get, get your feel, uh, for what you, you, you might be wanting to see from staff. One, the first thing is, um, this week we learned about a process that the county is calling Clackamas County Water and Environment Services Stakeholder Interviews. I got called, Tony got called. Um, I think a couple of you got called. It's, um.
I didn't get called. It was my feeling.
I bet. I, I, I don't know the process by which they pick folks, but I think it, they've been picking folks across both the districts and making selections.
Or carry picking?
I, I can't speak to that. All I can tell you is, um, that, you know, there's kind of an unknown participant list. We haven't asked for the list. I suppose we could ask for the list. Um, but, uh, I, this comes on the heels of another survey that the county recently did, which they're calling the Clackamas County Water and Environment Services Customer Telephone Survey. They did that in October. And it was completed by a firm that we've used as well, reputable firm, uh, D H M Research. But out of that came, uh, customer feedback about what kind of, what, you know, how they feel about the service, the wastewater services they're getting in, um, Clackamas County. And, uh, so I don't know where they're going with all this, but it's, it's a public involvement effort to kind of get some opinions about how things are going. The questionnaire that we, we asked for a copy of the questionnaire and received a copy of it, there's 18 questions. Uh, we're kind of thinking that it would make sense for us to collaborate a little bit, you know, out of a commission, uh, meeting kind of session to figure out, uh, a clap, you know, we wanna make sure we're responding to that, uh, consistently. And so we're not giving them mixed messages about what we believe the opinion to be. I think it's important that we participate. If we don't, I think they'll move on and, and get probably, uh, feedback that might not be as, um, um, concerning as what we might share with them. So I think it's important that we give them feedback. It's just how we give that. So Tony and I were thinking that it would make sense for us to put a little energy into that, um, that sit down with, uh, those of you that have been contacted. It sounds like Rocky's been contacted, uh, Rena, you've been contacted. So.
Interesting the people they contacted.
So, uh.
Very interesting.
Unless, unless you feel differently, that's kind of how we'll move forward with that. And, um.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we need to.
Yeah, I think we need to send a joint message. I don't, I don't like the fact that certain people being asked questions and...
The other thing...
To be honest, you know, it's really a breach of protocol for anybody at the county staff to be reaching out to our elected officials without going through our city manager. And that message needs to be sent loud and clear.
It's like they're trying to pit people against...
I would never...
Absolutely.
You know, you know, we would, one of you guys would never think about going over and talking to somebody, to an elected at Westland or Gladstone, without talking to me and Tony first. You know, it's just, it's not done, you don't do that. Now, an elected can go talk to an elected, but I wouldn't, for the same, by the same token, I wouldn't pick up the phone and call Don Otterman or Ross Schultz at Gladstone without at least letting Tony know that I was gonna do it.
We find it a bit interesting that it wasn't the entire commission, nor the commissioners who have been most involved in the process today.
Right.
So, I would like you to send that message to Mr. Krupp and Mr. Geist.
The other thing I wanted to mention was, one of the things that has been happening at a staff level, level is, if you recall, those of you that have been involved, the county has this scope of services that they're wanting to consult with an engineering firm to proceed with some kind of design or conceptual determination on what happens with the solids handling process at the treatment plant. So, they've shared with me that scope of work. I've reviewed it, I've shared my comments with them. The scope of work, in my opinion, needed a little adjustment, mostly about allocation and equity. And was it, you know, gave me an opportunity to share with staff our concerns about trust or lack thereof. And, and, you know, really just acknowledging that they, a lot of the decisions they're trying to make are being made without a full picture of kind of the data needs that they really should be getting first. But the scope of work is what it is. I think they're gonna move forward with it. So again, we continue to provide input where we can. And I thought it was, I was glad that they asked for the input. I just wanted to share with you that, that that has happened as well. And then, it's today, Wednesday. So yesterday, I attended with another staff member, the Board of County Commissioners Meeting, and they had an agenda item about the Blue Heron ponds that they acquired from the Blue Heron mill site. So, Tri-City and C C S D agreed collectively to purchase that site in 2012. And the purchase price was, was probably right. It was like $1.75 million. And they, we agreed through the Tri-City Advisory Committee and through the River Health Committee to go ahead and collect and purchase that. We purchased 50% of it, and so did C C S D number one. So, it's kind of been sitting there, we haven't heard much about it, but apparently, there's been a fair amount of activity because at the board meeting, they talked a fair amount about, or they talked specifically about what they wanted to do with that property and gave staff direction on a couple of alternatives to, first of all, move forward with capping a portion of the ponds over there. And that was about a $68 million project. So, they haven't really committed $68 million, but they've asked staff to look into that project further and have, and bring back to the commission a decision with a consultant contract or a construction contract, those kind of things could happen. And, you know, they seem pretty ready to kind of move forward with that. They also are looking at some of the land that they don't necessarily think that they're gonna need for, for future planning of that site. And there's no, no certainty on how much the value of that land is or anything like that, but they basically directed staff to move forward with determining, you know, what's the best phasing or use of sale of some of that land. And so, staff's moving forward with that, and we expect to see more. We, we, we were lucky to find that on the agenda. We just happened to have Lance Paulson, who's been monitoring a lot of their agendas. We found it on the agenda. It hasn't been discussed at the Tri-City Advisory Committee level or at the Regional Wastewater Treatment Capacity Advisory Meetings either. So, it's kind of a surprise to see him taking that kind of a move, but...
What is the point in capping the ponds?
Well, they've, they're a bit of a maintenance liability, really. I think that that site was mainly there for the, Blue Heron site had that, and they could discharge water to the Willamette River. And...
So those were their settling tanks? Their settling ponds take solids out before they treat it and discharge?
And, and, and the plan right now is that that would not be needed for any kind of use at the wastewater treatment plant. But they do like the rights that go along with both the temperature limitations. There's a, it's a deep water discharge, so it'd be a deeper water discharge. And they think in the future, they're gonna need that to comply with regulatory limits on temperature discharge to the river.
And how do they plan on getting it there?
Piping that by way of, I think what I saw was an alignment that showed it crossing the 205 Bridge and going along, along, what's the, Willamette River Drive and down into the site. So, that's kind of the plan.
That's a cheap project, right?
Well, they suggested it would save the ratepayers, not any specific to any ratepayers.
So, I, I have one quick question. Was there any talk about how that would affect the property owner and the Willamette Falls Legacy Project? Was there any mention about that at all?
It doesn't go...
It's on the other side.
This is on the Westland side.
It's on the other side, oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, you know, the alignment wouldn't even take it through downtown Oregon City, they'd cross the...
There is a secondary alignment, I will say that, which would put it through.
I didn't realize that was Blue Heron over there, too.
That, that was mentioned. They didn't show it in a drawing, but it was, they acknowledged that they bought the pipe as well that terminates at the Blue Heron site.
And is that pipe part of the right-of-way feet?
I...
Not where it's located, no.
Yeah, it's, well, the river part isn't. If they were to use our right-of-way to get to it, it would be.
The portion they bought is south of the rail spur.
Okay.
And it continues between the river and the railroad.
A couple other little pieces, sorry, the D Q, we're planning, staff is planning to meet with D Q, with other agency folks regarding air quality discharge. Just kind of opening that can a little bit to find out what kind of permitting would be, or what kind of testing might be required for any kind of air quality concerns with Tri-City. And then, there's a, you mentioned the Regional Capacity, Wastewater Treatment Capacity Advisory Committee on December 10th. Their agenda calls for 30 minutes of public comment. If you remember, they mentioned having 30 minutes of public comment. We're looking into what that means exactly, but that's something I think we need to talk about as well.
I have a question about a project that you didn't mention, and that was the, I think it's a sewer line that's going in on Division. How is that project going, and what's the timeline for completion?
It's one project I didn't get a great update on, but that project's moving along now. If you remember, a lot of that was scheduled for pipe bursting. We've since had ground conditions that didn't, didn't, weren't working with that. So they've open-cut all the work, and they've made their way up to the top of the project, which is Division Street. And I think they've got basically another 400 feet of very deep sewer line to install. So they're making good headway on that project. They still have to do services, so I'm guessing they've got another month of project. I, I don't have the schedule in my head. But it's going well.
Got it?
That's it.
The only other thing that I have is I'll be out of the office on this Friday. So with that, I conclude. Thought you said you had one other thing you wanted to talk about. Remember, you talked to me before the meeting?
I think it was, it was dealing with responding to the stakeholder interviews.
All right. So before I get to the commissioners, I saw that the Executive Director of the Chamber showed up late, so I think she has something to say. So Amber, would you like to come up?
I have to confess, Mayor, that I had anticipated that you wouldn't get to the item I was interested in at the moment until later.
You just didn't see the continuous part of the Bee Creek River Concept Plan.
Oh. Oh, okay. My apologies.
That's right.
Amber Holvec, Director for the Oregon City Chamber. And I did just want to share with you that the Oregon City Chamber Board of Directors did unanimously vote to support, hopefully, sharing with you, the city commission, that we'd love to have your support for the Brownfields Assessment and Remediation Joint Grant Application. It seems like a win-win to us, and for all of these reasons, I do have a, a formal letter to submit to you, but I would guess you've already passed it.
We have.
We did.
See, we elected the right people, didn't we?
But you can give that to, to Ms. Riggs to put in the record.
I would be happy to, I'd be very happy to. And that, that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Commission.
Father's time?
Mayor and City Commissioners, my sincere apologies. I didn't get my slip-in for citizen comments in time. And you had quickly moved on to the next agenda item, so, good for you. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. And I just wanted to remind our listening audience, and unless someone here was going to mention about the, about Metro's Neil Creek Canyon community gathering. This is, I think, their third? Might be their fourth, I think it's their third.
The third.
Yeah, it's the third, and I think the final community meeting that they're having on the planning of the trail system and the, and the trailhead development for the Neil Creek Canyon project. And it's going to be this, next Thursday, so not this Thursday, but the 10th. And it's going to be held at the Jackson Campus, and that's at 5:30. Yeah, you don't have anything else going then?
No, none at all.
And I wasn't specifically inviting...
During the snowflake raffle party.
There's a snowflake raffle, the, the chamber is having their gift exchange. Everything is happening Thursday, the 10th. But for those, those folks that might be listening in that are interested in what's going on in Neil Creek Canyon, that's at 5:30 at the Jackson Campus. And again, I think this is the third, and I think it's the final, the final community input for what types of trails they would like to have there. I just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks for the time.
So, Commissioner Maggerberg, you have anything?
I guess, attending the C4 Metro Subcommittee Meeting tomorrow. Part of the Economic Restructuring Committee for Main Street, and among the many other things that Jonathan shared with us this evening, the committee's also looking at downtown parking issues and signage. And one of the things that some of the committee members would like to do is meet with private property owners and see if they might be open to at least signing their parking lots in the evening, evenings and weekends when they're not in business use. So, there might be some way to repurpose the signage grant to fund parking signage in addition or instead of. So I thought that was a, it's been a longstanding issue, and they're working on it.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Spent Thanksgiving break in Bend, which I think is applicable to what's going on with the discussion of tourism. Doug LaPlaca, who made the presentation about our tourism plan for Oregon City, works closely in Bend with the tourism programs that are happening there. Took a tour of the downtown in the foot of snow. Tour, kind of spent some time in the old Mill District there. I see a lot of connections with what we're doing in Oregon City to what Bend has already tackled. And so, I thought that was interesting and enjoyed it a lot.
Commissioner Polly?
Um, yes, so Thursday, the 19th, the commission took a little field trip down to Wilsonville and Lake Oswego to check out their urban renewal projects. And it was very worthwhile, so we got a lot of good information. Wilsonville really uses urban renewal as leverage for projects. And they use it as a tool to encourage or leverage other funding. So that was really neat. And then they also take a very proactive approach in community involvement and education. And they get support for the projects before, and they don't have to. They, there's no voter approval or anything like that. They just do it because they want the buy-in. So that was very interesting. And Lake Oswego, they are mainly using it for one very large project. It was good to get those ideas, and it was great to talk to the economic development directors to get more information, and there was a lot of staff there. So, thank you for that.
Great.
That was good.
You're welcome. Did you go on that?
Yes.
And doesn't Wilsonville have like a short PowerPoint presentation on urban renewal and what they've done with it and the different...
They, they gave us a presentation that day, there may be another one.
Yeah, I'd like you to see it, it was good.
Yeah, I think maybe we could ask them to bring that over if they want, you know, sometime early next year, if they wanted to send somebody over for 15 minutes at a, at a meeting to give us, you know, a piece of that presentation or, you know, the highlights or whatever.
Yeah, it was focused on, mainly on Villa Bonne, what they've been able to do with the urban renewal districts that they have down there on both sides of I-5, as well as the Coffee Creek and some of the newer industrial ones that they put in place.
Right, I mean, it would be good to get some of that financial information out there in our community to kind of counteract some of the negative things that are being said out there.
We can look into that.
Okay.
And why it was there, too. So, there was a lot of good information.
Apologize, I had to work, so... So, yeah?
I just want to remind everybody about the tree lighting. It is going to be...
The Christmas tree lighting?
The Christmas tree lighting. And I told Lauren down there on Main Street, she's the marketing director now, she was the intern. And now she's working on marketing. But I told her that is as big, it's going to be as big as trick-or-treating. So, everybody needs to come down and make sure it's as big as trick-or-treating, so I don't eat my words, but it, it is just...
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I know.
Especially if the weather is, but it didn't stop.
It was very big last year, and Santa Claus is a big deal. So he's going to be at Coffee Rush this year, so that is going to be one crowded area. So, everybody come down, and that is on...
Saturday, December 5th at 4:30.
Saturday, thank you.
And the elevator thing, 3:30.
And the elevator, the elevator line. So just come down to Main Street and plan on spending the evening out there.
Okay, so I have one small piece of business. You guys know that I went to the conference, the United States Conference of Mayors June Convention. Your first year, you're invited to come as a guest for free. After that, they ask you to join the conference. The cost to us is $1,700. I would tell you that I get an incessant amount of email from Tom Cochran, who is the Executive Director. But very often, it is, it is interesting stuff that maybe our staff wouldn't get, wouldn't know about if, you know, if I didn't get that information. So I've sent stuff to several department heads, including John Collins over at South Fork. We probably wouldn't have heard about this whole EPA Waters of the USA rule if, if I hadn't got ahold of that through the US Conference of Mayors, so... And there are two events a year. There's the Winter Conference in Washington, DC, which I'm not gonna go to this year, but I probably will go in 2017. And that gives us a chance to be back in DC and actually be lobbying our federal partners and doing all that, along with being able to network with some of the larger city mayors and really, you know, have, and to also do some networking with, you know, the mayors from around here. I got to spend a lot of time with Charlie Hales at, at the thing last year, and that really helped our relationship with the city of Portland. Spent some time with the police chief of Portland. So there's a, you know, I, I think there's a lot of value to it. So I just wanted to get buy-in for us to spend that money, if it's okay with you guys.
Yeah, we have a line item in the budget for those type of things, and I don't think we've ever...
Okay. So, I'll give this back to you, and you can take care of that. Two things. I took care of that. So, one thing, WFMC, Willamette Falls Media Center is having an event on Friday, December 5th. This is from 12 to 4.
Friday?
Oh, that's, that's...
Friday?
Oh, Saturday, Saturday, Saturday.
Easy time of year.
They are, they're having cake or cookies and, and hot chocolate, and Mrs. Claus will be at the Media Center, 1101 Jackson Street.
What time is that again?
12 to 4. That is the 5th, right? Yes, Saturday, the 5th.
And the tree planting's earlier in the day.
And one of the things they're doing is you can, I think it's 15 bucks you can pay to be, do a three-minute-like video if you've got folks from, you know, other parts of the country, and they have, we have the green screen... the country, and they have, we have the green screen, so they can put up different kinds of backgrounds, you know, the whole, you know, Mount Hood or whatever. I don't know exactly how many backgrounds they have. But if you have a service member overseas, they will do that for you for free. So, it gives you a chance to do a professionally-done, three-minute video as a Christmas card to somebody like that. So I just wanted to let everybody know that that's coming up on Saturday. And I've been not horribly busy with mayor stuff the last couple of weeks. I've had a couple of meetings about Tri-Cities, and that's really been about it. Everything kind of got, has been sort of put on hold for the holidays now. A lot of our meetings have been postponed until January. So, other than that, did do a South Fork meeting. That's right. Did the, we're redoing our master plan, and we were selecting the contractor that's going to do the master plan, and we picked CH2M. So, other than that...